All right, we'll call the meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Zoning Appeals for their April the 11th, 2022 meeting to order. If you all would, we'll wait on Mr. Yaman to get seated. We're glad to see you. If you all would, please, let's all stand, have a moment of silence for guidance in this meeting, and then after that, we will salute our flag. Please join in saluting the flag.
Our flag is to be lifted high in the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mr. Bromfield?
Here.
Mr. Yaman?
Here.
Ms. Deering?
Here.
Mr. Craddock?
Here.
Mr. Merricks?
Here.
Mr. Easley?
Here.
We'd like to welcome the full board, and especially like to welcome Mr. Yaman back after his
Thank you.
...experience. Hope you're feeling well, and thank you for joining us. Ah, you have your agenda before you for the meeting tonight. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? So move.
Second.
Motion on a second. Time to vote. You have your minutes of the February the 7th meeting in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I move they be approved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Round a second. Time to vote.
Well, you need to say, that's what I need to do.
Yeah? Okay, but please.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. All right, ah, in the old business?
I do not have any old business.
Okay, and any new business?
Um, we will have two cases next month. One is a special use permit for a sawmill, and the other is a special use permit for the placement of a double wide mobile home.
Okay, and that date will be?
May 9th at 6:00 p.m.
Six o'clock. All right, I don't have a chairman's report as such, but I do want to mention something and remind our board and the citizens here. The Board of Zoning Appeals is a quasi judicial board that has been appointed by the court to interpret and uphold the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance. If a special use permit creates adverse situations that can be mitigated by conditions, then we're obligated to issue the special use permit. If the adverse situations cannot be mitigated by conditions, then we're obligated to deny the permit. We'll do our very best to uphold the zoning ordinance of Pennsylvania County. All right, the time is 6:05. We will open the public hearing, excuse me, case S dash 22 dash 003 Firefly Solar LLC, special use permit for utility scale solar energy facility. Is right there.
Case S dash 22 dash 003 Firefly Energy LLC has petition for a special use permit on 3,791.95 acres located off of State Road 58, South Bos- South Boston Highway, State Road 713, Rock Springs Road, State Road 712, White Ridge Road, State Road 62, Milton Highway, State Road 899, Carwell Lane, State Road 656, Current Church Road, and State Road 970 Pounds Road in the Dan River Election District for utility scale solar energy facility. On March 1st, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended by an eight to zero vote that the, um, special use permit be granted with the conditions recommended by staff along with the applicants to, um, recommended additions. Um, the staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative with Firefly LLC is here to represent the petition.
Okay.
Good evening, board members and staff. Uh, my name is Jase Walker, I'm a development manager with Recurrent Energy, uh, developer for the Firefly Solar Energy Project. Uh, firstly, I want to say thank you for considering this matter this evening.
Sure, is that better? Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you for considering this matter this evening. Um, I do want to say thank you to all the landowners that are involved in the project and those that are here this evening in support of the project. Also want to say thank you to the neighbors of the project that throughout this permit process have given us very valuable feedback. Um, and for those that were at the prior planning commission hearings, I hope everyone has been well since then, and board members, it's good to see you all for the first time. Um, as you know, we are seeking a special use permit for Firefly. This is a 150 megawatt solar project located in the Dan River District. Uh, this project adheres to and in places goes beyond the county requirements for vegetative buffering, property line setbacks, and community engagement. Uh, overall, this project is good for the county. Uh, this is shown by the Board of Supervisors unanimously approving and signing a siding agreement with the project, the Planning Commission unanimously voting approval, uh, in the project as Ms. Ragstale mentioned, uh, and lastly, uh, the planning staff's recommendation for approval prior to that. Uh, so I'd like to just recap a quick history, uh, of the project itself in the community. Um, in December, we sent invitations to all neighbors of the project, uh, to invite them to a community meeting that we had in January at the Ringgold Fire District, uh, excuse me, Fire Station. There were 30 attendees there, and we had great conversations over the two hour event. Uh, we also had another open house in February. Uh, we sent out invitations again to all neighbors to the project and had 22 attendees sign in, uh, and more great discussions over the four hours of that event. And lastly, we sent out project information packets to every neighbor of the project, uh, in the event that folks were unable to attend either open houses. And during all this time, we've responded to emails, phone calls, text messages, and visited with folks in their homes, uh, to understand their concerns and make adjustments to the site plan, uh, to accommodate their concerns. Um, and we're doing everything we reasonably can to be a good neighbor. Uh, we've made adjustments to the site plan, as I mentioned, at the expense of the project. So this includes moving the proposed panels, inverters, fences, collection lines, and access routes, uh, away from concerned neighbors. We're not seeking any rezoning, uh, we're just looking to utilize existing A1 agricultural and M1 light industry zoning. Um, this project does require a construction period that will create temporary noise and traffic as construction moves throughout the site, uh, but upon completion, it will be obscured by vegetation and will not create audible noise. Uh, this is a much better alternative than many other possible uses under the A1 and M1 categories. Uh, it's the right of the property owners involved in this project, uh, to proceed with this compatible use that provides the best option for their families without burdening their neighbors. Because the special use permit goes by tax parcel, we are permitting over 3,000 acres. Uh, however, after you remove acreage that's used just for collection line easements, and after you remove all the setbacks and wetlands, uh, there's actually only about 1,470 buildable acres on the site, and our latest design requires, uh, about 1375, 1,375 acres for the project. Um, and only a fraction of this is considered impervious, uh, compared to other forms of development. Through the siding agreement that was unanimously approved, uh, and executed by the Board of Supervisors in December, Firefly will provide approximately $12.25 million, uh, in payments to the county over its operation, and this is in addition to $3.5 million in real property tax revenue throughout the life of the project. Uh, if the property were to remain in its current use, it would generate approximately $319,000 over the life, uh, over the similar lifespan of 35 years. So this is over 49 times more revenue for the county, uh, and it also doesn't include the positive impacts to restaurants, groceries, gas stations, hotels, uh, during and after Firefly will generate clean electricity to power up to 25,000 homes in a year, and once this power is injected onto the transmission grid, uh, the clean energy will disperse throughout the electrical system and power homes and businesses in Ringgold, Pennsylvania County, and beyond. Uh, the clean energy that is produced by this facility is a modern requirement for many companies, including the likes of Ford and Amazon, uh, in choosing new locations for their facilities. And, uh, Pennsylvania will not only benefit directly from Firefly's economic impact, uh, but will continue evolving its economy, attracting next generation businesses, and creating more jobs for the community. I ask that the board recognize the good that this project offers and the effort we continue to make in accommodating neighbors to the project and vote to approve this evening. Thank you very much.
Hang on, Mr. Walker, we may have some questions
Yes, sir.
Before you go. And for the record, I was reading my own statement. I failed to read the Board of Zoning Appeals zoning precepts, so let me please read these. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance, we, the Board of Zoning Appeals, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications and appeals in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all our decisions and recommendations be directed to the, to these goals, and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board other than the applicant regarding the zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. Thank you. All right, any questions for Mr. Walker?
I'd like to ask, Mr. Walker, how much tillable land would this take in?
Uh, it's a good question. I don't have that number in front of me at the moment. What I can tell you is that the majority of this property is in planted pine, commercial timber. Uh, there are a couple small assemblages of row crop areas that I can think of, pasture areas, um, but there's not a lot of agricultural activity taking place on the site. The majority is commercial timber. Yes, sir.
Got a question. Mr. Walker, uh, who will be the owner during construction?
Recurrent Energy will be the owner during construction, uh, and upon completion of the construction and the commencement of operation, will, uh, transfer ownership to Appalachian Power Company, which is a subsidiary of American Electric Power, AEP.
What is the connection of Recurrent Energy and Firefly Energy?
Firefly Energy is, uh, a special purpose vehicle, uh, a business essentially under Recurrent Energy, where we put all of our project assets and studies and things into, so that when the time does come for us to transfer ownership to Appalachian Power, we can transfer that project entity, uh, more easily than we could if everything were under Recurrent Energy itself.
Got it. Any more questions for the applicant? I think so, we may have a few more.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, we'll now hear from the public that has signed up to speak, uh, John Walters.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and zoning board members. Uh, I have been to the previous meetings and, uh, expressed my opposition to the proposed solar facility. I am greatly concerned about Pennsylvania County becoming a hub of solar facilities that only makes money for a few large landowners with no apparent advantage to other homeowners in the areas around these facilities. The county is the only entity gaining anything from this facility as far as tax money. Now, the gentleman just spoke, and the gentleman from Appalachian spoke at the last meeting, and he said that every bit of the electricity was going into the grid, going north, south, east, and west. Very little would be consumed by Pennsylvania County. If any, it would be very northern part of Pennsylvania County. So, you know, we didn't call them county, ambiguous right there. No one from Ringgold has Appalachian power, and the city of Danville does not buy power from Appalachian power. Why is this that our electric rates will not be affected by any of these solar facilities? I have observed that the facility is not located on any of the landowners that have this land where the facilities are going to be. Why is it that, uh, strange, isn't it, that, uh, the owners are okay with the neighbors on these property areas having solar facilities, but they, eh, they don't want on their property or around their families? The solar facility landowners can't understand why people are so opposed to these solar facilities. This is why. I think solar facilities are fine, but not in front, side, behind residences, and it's directly in front of my residence. And we, as county taxpayers, pay the bulk of residences for county taxes. These solar facilities could have been placed away from these residences, and I think it's your job as zoning people to make sure that this really happens. With the current rules for zoning, all that the county is going to have to have now in any future are large landowners or farmers, so they might want to be called, being at odds with homeowners now and in the future. I urge you guys to make corrections to this problem, or we will only create animosity between landowners. Solar facilities can be an eyesore for future homeowners in our county. I urge you guys to strongly consider everything that I have said, and don't look at the money only. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Good evening.
Uh, my name is Rhonda Guthrie. My family's property is surrounded by the Water Strider Project. It's an 80-megawatt facility in Halifax County. I know representatives from the solar companies have always said, these projects don't affect anything, but I've been living in the middle of one for over a year, and I know what I'm talking about when I say they do. First thing is the noise, and believe me, they do make noise. It's like a giant swarm of bees. It's worse in the early morning and late evening, but there are solar panels 800 feet from us with trees as a buffer, yet we can still hear it, and it can be, at times, very irritating. Shortly after they started running this project, my, um, television, we have DirecTV, had a message that said, can't communicate with satellite. Now, you would think maybe something was wrong with the satellite system, but the funny thing about it is, it would go off when the sun would come up in the morning, and it would go back to working perfectly when the sun would go down at night. And it's not consistent. It, it goes and comes, but it makes, you never know when it's going to happen again. And after that, the internet started messing up. Someone can send me an email, I'll get it three or four days later, and if I try to send one, it just sits there like it's blocked, and then all of a sudden, a whole batch of emails will come in at one time, and then a few days later, it will, it will do it again. And I also have reports from some of my other neighbors who live on the outside edge of the facility that say their cell phone service is being affected as well. Now, none of these things had ever happened before they started running this facility. Now, these are all things that they said would not ever happen. What else are they keeping from us? The solar facility you're considering here today is almost twice the size of the one that's surrounding us. How much more noise and problems will this huge thing going to cause? Anyone living around this thing doesn't realize what they're going to go through during the construction. It was a nightmare. Noise, dust, smoke, large trucks and machinery back and forth in front of our house all hours of the day and night, flat tires on our cars, trash in the yard, big trucks, delivery trucks would come down and get stuck at the end of the road and back into our hay field and put ruts in it trying to turn around and get back out. It was awful. And they claimed they were going to make, um, 200 jobs, local jobs, when they were doing the solar farm. They had 200 people working for them, all right. They brought them in from other places. Nobody from our area, but maybe the peripheral people got a job. It's my opinion, no solar farm should be built anywhere near where any residents. And I also think there should be a limit on just how large these solar farms can be, because to me, this is just too large. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. Yeah, my name is Larry Burnett, and, um, I've lived and worked in the Mountain Hill and Ringgold community all my life, and to me, there's no better place to live than face the earth. And if I thought there was any proof whatsoever that solar panels were harmful to people, wildlife, the land, all the environment, then I'd be against it too. But the truth of the matter is, solar panels are the cleanest, quietest, safest form of energy on the planet. And it's becoming clear that most people that oppose the project, that they're not against solar panels, they're just against their location. And, uh, they don't want the view that they've had, become accustomed to, they don't want it to change, so, uh, but I'm here to tell you, it's a lot of things worse than solar panels could be your neighbor. I mean, big tracts of land like this, they attract other big businesses too. I mean, it could be, uh, look at the people over in Mountain Hill, they've got a, they've got a landfill they look at. We've got a racetrack right across from us, uh, makes a lot of noise. Could be a housing project, could be a huge industry building coming up. And all these, they either stink, they make noise, or they congest up our country roads, and, uh, once these solar panels are up, it's not going to have any negative effect on the community at all. Another fact is that, unlike, uh, somebody just said that, this thing will benefit everybody in the county. Even the ones that oppose it, I mean, you can't deny that, that, that it's going to help the county and all the taxpayers. I mean, you've got an additional $16 million in revenue coming this way. It may not direct, it may not benefit you directly, but, um, this could help pay for the new jail or, or the, um, the courthouse that, that the county needs, uh, and, and like I said, it may not be putting money in your pocket, but it's helping you. And another thing it's going to do, it's going to help open the doors of some of these large companies that require clean energy, and, and it'll give them, uh, a chance to locate in Pennsylvania County. All right, in closing, one thing I can say about this bunch right here, um, Jase and his whole crew, I think they went above and beyond the requirements of the county, and they've been addressing the issues that a lot of the citizens had. I know they've had two community meetings, and they've had numerous one-on-one meetings, and this has resulted in a lot of changes, a lot of changes down our way. And, uh, and, and what they're doing, i- it's costing the whole project, it's costing them a lot, but they were willing to do it. And, uh, I think they've done a really good job on that. Last thing I say, I think this is a good project for Pennsylvania County, and everyone will benefit, if, if some, more than others, but everyone will benefit from it. Thank you.
Melvin McCann, McCain.
Good evening, Mel, oh, my name's Mel McCann. Good evening, staff. We agree to the plan right here, I think it'd benefit our family.
Sir, could you, would you mind taking your mask? I'm having a hard time hearing you. Thank you.
Good evening, staff. My name's Mel McCann. We agree with this plan. I think it'd benefit our family.
Thanks, sir. Josh Burnett.
Hello, my name is Josh Burnett, and I'm a member of the community in which this farm will be located. I've been a part of these meetings and heard the arguments, both pros and cons, for this solar project. The pros extend anywhere from adding jobs to our area, helping reduce the human carbon footprint, to the economic advantages it would give our county, and having a clean renewable energy source to supply our community and others. The cons seem to extend to it not being aesthetically pleasing for a few residents and the temporary construction of the project. I do not believe anyone in their mind or heart is against clean renewable energy. They just don't want to see it. Much like no one is against chickens, turkeys, or hogs, they just don't want to see them, smell them, or hear them. Or how people understand the need to have a landfill, they just don't want it near them. This land is agricultural farmland, and the landowners can have any of these farms, with the smell, noise, and waste, and no one has the right to argue. But with this farm, you have none of that. No smell, no noise, no haul trucks after completion running in and out day after day. Instead, you have a peaceful field harvesting energy. Some people inherently oppose change. What they fail to realize is not all change is bad, and this change can benefit you as well as tens of thousands of others. So, in closing, I say yes to this project.
Skylar Zunk.
Good evening. My name is Skylar Zunk. It's a pleasure to be back with you this evening. I'm here on behalf of Conservatives for Clean Energy and the Land and Liberty Coalition. It's a pleasure to be back in Pennsylvania. I've been in front of the board a couple of times, several planning commission meetings. This is my first board of zoning appeals, both in Pennsylvania County and in general. That's an interesting system you all have here. We first engaged in Pennsylvania County on behalf of smart, conservative, and responsible energy policy when you all were considering changes to your ordinance a few months back. We commented, and we ultimately decided that the ordinance that you all amended was smart in a lot of ways. We're really proud of what you all have done here on behalf of Clean Energy and Pennsylvania County. So much so that earlier this year, we awarded the chairman of the board and your county attorney with the 2022 Clean Energy Award on behalf of Conservatives for Clean Energy. The ground rules you've set through the ordinance create strong setbacks, strong buffers, and you're respecting neighbors. At Conservatives for Clean Energy, we talk all the time about the importance of private property rights. It's a uniquely American privilege to do on your property what you see fit, so long as you're not adversely affecting neighbors. We think that this project, the Firefly project, is going to respect neighbors, and it's the right of the property owners to pursue clean energy development within reason. We also talk about economic development, whether that's the Shine Program at Southside Virginia Community College that trains young men and women on how to install these panels to help create a better career story for clean energy development across Virginia, especially Southside. We also talk about energy independence. This is energy created on our side of the grid, right here in Pennsylvania County, that's going to power this county, put electrons on the grid that are going to be used in multiple places. Instead of reliance on foreign energy, we think investing right here in Virginia is the right way to go. We think the Firefly project's also going to bring a sizable amount of tax revenue to the county that the board of supervisors, the government can spend on schools, local services, and first responders. I come to you also as a neighbor to a utility-scale solar project that's currently under development. It is not my land that is in that project, but I respect my neighbor's right to do that. It's going to be a noisy time for a few months during construction, but it's a principle thing. It's not my land, and I'm fully in support of my neighbor pursuing clean energy if they respect the neighbors, respect the folks on my road, and do it well. I encourage you to vote yes on the Firefly project this evening. Thank you.
Denise Sheffield.
First off, I have been trying desperately to work with Firefly, and I get my questions. They all fall in depth years. They're wrong and incorrect. Just now, he stood here and he talked to, no noise. I was told ambient noise. You heard Ms. Guthrie? I just had this pulled up, and now it's not coming through, but I'll play it in one second. I had it set. I don't know if this one is going to play correctly. No. Either way, it's extremely and excruciating screeching noise, and Ms. Guthrie says setback much further than mine is intended to be or worked out to be. I can't get any give. This will be visible for my entire 17-acre property line.
Can you speak into the microphone?
It will be visible for my entire 17-acre property line. We recently moved here, and the land is being leased to Firefly from the landowners that sold us this property. They lied and deceived. We've been lied and deceived, too, ever since. We, I recommended, based on Middlesex, Spotsylvania County, and Essex County, doing a third-party study, because the only thing the county is willing to look at, and the only thing folks are being told, is solar-funded studies, and it's all the positives. But to do an impact study that's unbiased would be the best thing for the citizens and this community. These projects will not go away. Currently, and again, Middlebury, Spotsylvania County, Mecklenburg County, they're catching on, and they've completed that for their community and their citizens to make an educated and informed approach. You're not getting that now. Greenpoint County Dominion shut down currently. Now, do not, fires of unknown origin. I can tell you it's the lake effect, and it's birds catching fire. I'm almost positive, but they're shut down. This is not new. It's happened in California. It burned 1,200 acres. The last planning meeting, they waived any fire training for Firefly. There is no concern currently for the health and safety of the citizens here. This is my home. This is completely surrounding. I will lose value. There are full studies out there that are not solar-funded, that said a minimum, once completed and once the buffers are grown, it's a minimum of 7% in the immediate area, and that follows through to a five-mile radius. It's all we have. We moved here in safe to retire. I am working day and night, I was, to try to get our home finished up, because we were doing updates, to get it sold, so I can leave. And I sustained a permanent life-altering injury. I will never be the same. One more thought. Luisa Conley. They have an established solar field EPA, continuously finds Dominion for contaminated runoff stormwater into the creeks. Currently an established solar farm. Understand what you're doing, and you can't just listen to the salespeople. Either that or get me time to leave, because they haven't given me two days' notice before the first planning meeting, and that's how they work.
Raymond Sheffield.
Good evening, Raymond Sheffield. I wanted to speak to you gentlemen about the Firefly project. Don't get me wrong, I'm not against the solar system, not whatsoever. I'm against the location of it. I'm against the location of it and where they're building it, because, you know, like I say, I just moved there, I just bought the place, wanted to retire there, and then I find out within nine months that they're going to put a solar facility around me. One thing I'd like to ask is, any of these gentlemen that got up here and spoke about this, how good it was and how good it is for the community, do they have one in their front yard? Do they have one on their side yards or in their backyard? Do they wake up every morning and look at it? That's what I'm going to have to do. It's just uncalled for, yes. My wife wanted me to play this. I don't know if I could even get it started or not. It's just, you, nobody understands where we're coming from, you know? It's going to get in our well water. I've got a year or so I'm going to retire. It's going to be in my well water. I've got animals. It's going to affect my animals. You hear buzzing all night, all day. I mean, do any of you gentlemen have a solar farm in your yard? Do you have it next to your house, or are you going to have to wake up every morning and look at it? I moved here, I moved here from Northern Virginia DC area to retire and retire in a nice community. I grew up right down the road here in Roanoke. All my life, I lived there. And then I moved back here, so I can retire here, because it's a nice community, and it's a nice area, and now this happens to me. Blindsided by what I thought was the nicest people I'd met in my life. I was wrong, because no one whatsoever said anything to us about what was happening, until we got a letter in the mail three days before I was supposed to show up to vote for it. Three days. I don't know what else to do. All I can do is ask you to think about other people and what they're going to have to put up with before you vote on it. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Sheffield, that's a question.
Mr. Sheffield, did you meet with representatives of Firefly to discuss your concerns?
Yes, I have.
So, the county has some setbacks. Was any compromises made? I'm just wondering. What do you mean? What does, what does that?
I mean, they're within 100, 200 feet of our property line.
Additional, additional, in addition to what? Yes, but I'm wondering about your, if y'all worked out any agreement.
There is no buffer, and it will be visible. They will not answer my questions. I sent the emails now at this point, and I get no response. There's a small part where this will be directly adjoining our property line, considering the 17 acres, but anywhere we go on our property, this will be visible, because they will not adhere to buffers. It's not, we've seen the under-delivered promises throughout the county. And then this one section, the county, I guess, is requiring a 200-foot, they extended it to a 400-foot, and that's because there's a hill there. It wasn't to accommodate. And then they moved the inverters a little bit more, but Ms. Guthrie has an 800-foot setback from the start of the panels. And the inverters there, on a much, much smaller scale, are mind-boggling. I mean, they, they just, they're deafening, and they're irritating. Would you want to buy a piece of agricultural property, go there to retire? It's paradise right now, and we have a hobby farm, and that's what we're going to listen to.
Mr. Ms. Sheffield, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'll probably ask Karen later.
All right. Thank you all. That's fine. Thank you. We'll, we'll get to that in a minute.
Okay.
Okay, that's all that has signed up to speak. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the board? And if, and I would ask you this, if you're going to say the same thing that's already been said, we'd appreciate it, if you wouldn't speak, so. Anyone that would like to speak, please come up, state your name.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee.
Turn the microphone up a little bit.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Amanda Cox with Appalachian Power, and I'm here to speak in support of the Firefly project. As was discussed upon completion of the construction, we will actually purchase the project from Recurrent Energy. We currently have about 2,000 customers in Pennsylvania County. We serve many of the industrials, and we are building out transmission service and a station to Berry Hill Megasite. So, we're very much invested in the community. As you know, economic development prospects consistently ask about renewable energy, and we think that this project will be very important to Berry Hill. Not only is it renewable energy, it's local renewable energy. We are transitioning to low-carbon solutions, like many others, while helping support local communities with increased tax base and job creation. We are a strong community partner. We've been around for over 100 years. Our reputation means a lot to us, and we look for the same in partners that we bring for projects across our service territory. We feel Recurrent has that same type of reputation, and we'll continue to work with the community partners, the landowners, your county staff, and continue to be a good neighbor. We want to make sure that we talk with every landowner, we issue and understand every concern, and we do our best to be that good neighbor. I hope that you'll approve this project so that we can work together in an even greater capacity in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
My name's William Powell, and I would like to refer to Mr. Walter's statement about the power going on the grid that's going north, south, east, and west. I beg to differ. When the electron hits the line, it goes to the point of least resistance. Whoever that's at, that's where it goes. And as far as these good people over here that came, bought 17 acres of land with the intention of enjoying this other man's land, and he decided to do something else with it, I feel sorry for him, but maybe they should just go and back up to their property line and look across that property and not the other man's property. It just doesn't seem fair. That's all I've got to say.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Come on, state your name, please, sir.
My name is Chuck Angier, and I'm from the Callins-Gretner district. There's a lot of things I could say, but the only one thing I want to make clear to everybody, including the public here, is that this project is going to, when you add it to everything else, that'll be right at 15,000 acres of Pennsylvania farmland, with the exception of one golf course, that has been converted over to solar usage. I'm all for solar, at least at my house, but I think we really need to reconsider what's happening to our farmland here in this county. Bedford County has recently passed an ordinance that, if I'm not mistaken, it's basically ruled out development of solar facilities on agricultural land. Culpeper County, I believe, has got an ordinance in the works to restrict it to M1. I encourage Pennsylvania County to keep these things in mind when we consider these facilities. Thank you.
On that note, again, I would, I would state that this board does not set the ordinances for Pennsylvania County. That is the job of the board of supervisors. We are the board of zoning appeals. It's our duty to look after the ordinance as It's our duty to look after the ordinance as best we can. I appreciate your comments, and that, that would be something that would need to be taken up with the Board of Supervisors. Anyone else from the public? Alright, Mr. Walker, would you like to respond? We may have a few questions for you.
Thank you very much. I would just like to say thank you to everyone that spoke, both in support and offering feedback for us to consider. I do wanna just make two quick comments. One is that we did not request a wave fire training. What we requested, the Planning Commission, was to remove the training for battery energy storage in particular, because there is none at this site, it's only solar PV. So, we requested to adjust it so that the fire training occurs for solar PV, as opposed to battery energy storage as well, which, again, does not exist at this site. And I do wanna just touch on the ordinance and the setbacks that were mentioned and asked about. And so, just for the benefit of everyone here, I'm sure y'all are aware, but the setbacks used to be 35 feet in Pennsylvania County, 15 feet of which needed to be comprised of a vegetative buffer. The, the county then effectively shut down solar development with a radius-type moratorium, but then reopened solar development effectively under the requirement that we would require either 150-foot setbacks or 200-foot setbacks from property lines with residences on them. And so, throughout the perimeter of our site, we are either setback 150 feet from the property line adjacent, or 200 feet where there is a residence on the neighboring property. And Mr. Brumfield, in response to your question around the Sheffield's property that was asked about, the line that does join the project parcel, we moved that setback to be, from 200, we moved it to 410 feet to the nearest solar panel. We also shifted the fence line back. We shifted, we moved the nearest inverter away even further to over 800 feet, and we moved the collection line that connects all this PV down to the substation. We moved that to the entire other side of that project parcel, just so that we could preserve as much timber as possible on the eastern side of that parcel. We also did offer to bring out a visual consultant to conduct an analysis to see what would be visible from, from that property. Oh, and I did wanna mention as well, the gentleman that commented about farmland, I did wanna reiterate that, again, the amount of farmland on this, on this project is actually very minimal compared to a typical solar facility, which is true. Farmland often does overlap pretty well with the needs for a solar facility, being that it's flat, clear, and dry. However, in this case, like I mentioned, it is a vast majority commercial timber, so it's not removing very much prime farmland from, from production whatsoever.
Questions for Mr. Walker? Yes, the, the noise we heard, is that typical in a solar field?
I, I would say no, it's, it's hard to say, right? Because I'm not sure what that noise was. It's coming from a phone. It depends greatly on equipment selection. These components, you know, change throughout the years. I have no idea what's going on, on the example that was provided from the phone. I have no idea what equipment is on the Water Strider facility that was mentioned. What I will say is that we did conduct a noise study as a part of our application that states that by the time the noise that is generated by the inverters reaches the fence line of the project, it is below ambient noise levels. And that's typically, ambient noise levels are typically around 45 decibels, and the study finds that by the time you're at the fence line, the, the noise emitted by the inverter is 40 decibels, so less than that of the ambient noise in the area.
Thank you.
Question. The gentleman spoke earlier, Mr. Walters, I believe is his name, and he said he lived across the road from where some panels will be placed. Did you meet with this gentleman?
Yes, I did meet with Mr. Walters. And I do actually wanna credit Mr. Burnett, Mr. Larry Burnett, who spoke, because what he has done in that area has actually gone ahead and increased the setback ahead of time for the neighbors in his area there. So, there's two examples in particular on Cardwell Lane. One is a great big pasture that would make great sense for a solar facility, but he withdrew that altogether from consideration for solar to protect the view shed of Ms. Bass, who's across the street. So, there's a great swath of land that's just not available to us whatsoever, which we're fine with, because we understand that he did that for the concern of his neighbors. And as well, to the north of his parcel there, there's another equally sized swath that's not available for us to develop, and that's exactly the area that's across the street from Mr. Walters' driveway. And so, again, that's, that's off limits. Just to mention, we also did move the primary access route for the project across the street from Mrs. Bass' property to the north of Cardwell Lane to minimize the amount of construction and operation traffic to a degree, but primarily to limit the amount of construction traffic that would travel along Cardwell Lane.
Thank you. Once the project is complete, and you know what, I think everyone understands there will be noise and dust and going on during the construction period. Once the project is complete and operational, how many people will be there, how many vehicles will be coming and going on a daily basis?
Yeah, it's a good question, and I'm speaking from our experience, but it will be up to Appalachian Power and AEP to structure the operations and maintenance agreements that would ultimately determine that exact figure. But for a project of this size, we would typically estimate between three and five operations and maintenance employees. Now, this, this would be kind of full-time equivalents of jobs, so it might be, let's say, seven part-time folks that comprise that three to five full-time resource. Now, the, the vehicle traffic will be very minimal. It'll be light-duty trucks primarily. They'll visit the site as often as is needed, but typically, a lot of the ongoing operations and maintenance is limited to mowing vegetation, rinsing off panels from time to time. There's really not a lot of work to be done on these facilities. That's why one such as this size, 150 megawatts, simply requires three to five people, but the bulk of it is mowing the vegetation underneath the panels and around the project fence line, and so that can be done with, with light-duty pickup trucks.
Any more questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So, what, what is an example of 45 or 40 decibels? Would it be a car horn, a lawnmower? Do you have an example? I know you said ambient, but what is an example of 45 decibels? Like, what am I speaking at right now?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. I actually, in a hearing in Kentucky, I had someone with a decibel meter on their phone, and it was, it came up much higher than that 40 decibels at the fence line that I mentioned. I'm not a noise expert necessarily, so I can't quote you numbers here, but I can tell you for sure that ambient noise is much less than lawn mower, any sort of farm equipment, anything like that, that you would, that you would hear in a rural setting. We'd be happy to kind of provide more of that information, but I can't, I can't speak to it immediately at the moment.
Okay, another question from Ms. Guthrie. Was the, the construction, during the construction time, she quoted as being a nightmare, and said there's flat tires and damage to properties. What, what kind of mitigation do you have for that, where you can stay off of adjacent property owners and not interrupt their function? And then, of course, you know, I've been victim of flat tires at construction sites before, so I, I, what are y'all, what are you working on as far as mitigating that?
Yeah, it's a good question. I would say, you know, all that that I heard is just generally unacceptable from our perspective in terms of the construction contractors that we utilize. So, we would go, we're actually in the middle of the process right now of selecting an engineering procurement and construction contractor, an EPC, and we select from what we call tier-one suppliers in the market. So, these are folks that have a lot of experience, and even folks that have a depth of experience in Pennsylvania County in particular. And I know that there's, you know, some good and bad in, in the history of solar construction in Pennsylvania County, and that's kind of all the more reason why we want to select an EPC that does have experience in the county, so that they can learn from their mistakes and make sure that those don't happen again. So, I can't speak, you know, to precise measures that we'll take, but just generally, we expect a very high quality from our EPC, so we only select from the best. And ideally, we're selecting ultimately an EPC that has worked with Ms. Ragsdale in the past, for example, on the building permit, and knows exactly what to do and what not to do. So, that's what we're looking for.
Then, Mr. Sheffield quoted that there was a 7% property value loss. Do you have any studies that determine how that, is it, does it go down? Does it go up? How does it affect the property value?
Yeah, it's a good question, and we did include a property value assessment in our permit application that does find no impact, one way or the other, on property values. I realize that every situation is different, and so folks have differing opinions on this, and I realize that word bias gets thrown around. So, you know, I would say, take that study for what you will, but our findings, and we do these projects in Virginia, Kentucky, Georgia, I have experience in directly, we repeatedly conduct these property value assessments, and they find little to no impact whatsoever.
And then, you may not know anything about this, but she quoted that Dominion had been fined for their solar. Do you know anything about what kind of fines that, that utility services have been fined for, what kind of risks were there that someone thought were not appropriate?
Yeah, I'm, I can't speak very directly to the fines. I actually, last week, I believe, spoke with the gentleman who developed the, the solar project in Louisa County. It's called Belcher Solar. I believe that's the one that was referenced. And, yeah, it was a situation where there was unexpected stormwater runoff that occurred from the project parcel away from the site. And so, we are required through the county and through the state to secure a stormwater permit to avoid exactly that type of situation. You know, ideally, we make zero mistakes whatsoever. In reality, sometimes you make mistakes, and so the goal will be to avoid that situation altogether with the stormwater management plan and the stormwater permit. Certainly, again, there's lessons being learned, because this is somewhat of a newer industry. But, yeah, we'll certainly do our best to avoid any kinds of incidents like that and any, any fines.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Chairman? Anyone else? Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we can't take any more comments from the public. We had the public portion open, so he was, he's the last one to speak. Alright, the time is now 6:58. We'll close the public hearing. Alright, folks. The staff and the Planning Commission has recommended an approval of the, of the permit with 19 recommendations or conditions. They're in your packet. I'm sure you've read them all, so, comments?
Mr. Chairman, as stated earlier, the zoning board is tasked with interpreting the current zoning ordinance and is obligated to issue a special use permit unless there are adverse effects that cannot be mitigated through conditions. And that being said, in listening to the comments tonight, and also by reviewing the Planning Commission meeting previously, I have determined these adverse effects: noise, possible toxic EFM transmissions, possible lower real estate values, dust and general construction concerns, possible well water contamination, raw materials, impact on environment, possible habitat disturbance, and recycling. Some of these things did not come up tonight, but they came up previously. I took time to contact a local utility manager who deals with all types of energy: natural gas, coal, nuclear, and solar. I visited a working solar field, which was an effort to do, because you just can't walk into a solar field, but fortunately, I was able to do that. The noise was minimal. In fact, where I live, there's an ATV trail below my house, and the trucks that go up and pull the trailers on these ATV vehicles make a whole lot more noise than a buzz in a solar field. And it's all the time, not just during construction, it's all the time. I spoke with a expert from Massachusetts who assured me there are no EMF transmissions generated from solar panels, lower real estate values, again, depends on who you talk to. But there's nothing documented, per se, that their values decreased. Some reports show values increase. Same issue was, we had with cell towers when they first came out. Nobody wanted cell towers, and all of a sudden, there's cell towers everywhere, and people are getting used to them. I, I read a research from the North Carolina State University that showed no danger to well water, no raw materials in the panel, other than what's inside the panel, and they are sealed. They are very safe. The solar field I visited had some very large turkey tracks within the field. I mean, I mean, big ones. They won't know little bit of turkeys. So, that showed me that animals can get in there and live and be safe. I also determined from several sources that solar panels can be recycled, contrary to some reports I've heard earlier. They, they can be recycled. The Board of Supervisors has done an excellent job in reviewing the ordinance and addressing the concerns of citizens. Conditions are in place to protect, within reason, property owners. And we've heard tonight where one of the owners of the solar field property went out of his way to move panels or to put off bounds to put panels on, just to protect his neighbors. And I think that's, that's really important. It is the community development staff and the community's responsibility to make sure these conditions are followed. And I wanna repeat that. It is the community staff, development staff, and the community to make sure these conditions are followed. If something is not right, then you need to report it. If something is not where it should be, you need to say something. That's your responsibility in the community. Personally, I agree with Mr. Horner of the Planning Commission. We are dangerously close to oversaturating the county with solar fields, but that is not this board's responsibility. That is up to the Board of Supervisors. And I think it really needs to be addressed, how we move forward with these fields. I'm all for solar, but I can't imagine that with the technology we have available today that we can't take other forms of energy and make it clean for less money than we can with solar. But I'm not an expert, and I'm not saying it can be done, but I bet you out there somewhere that somebody said it can be done. So, with that being said, I would like to make a positive motion that this permit be granted.
With the 19 conditions.
With the 19 conditions and the, was that included, the two that they added? They added some conditions, too.
In your staff summary, there is a redline version. They would like to exclude utility poles and associated above-ground wiring from the height requirement, so I've included that. So, if you would like to include that in your motion, you can just state that you would like to amend condition to height to include that. And then, actually, the fire and rescue training, that condition that went before Planning Commission already had the wording about just the annual training, not battery-specific. So, that one height condition is the only one that you would need to make a motion to amend.
Whatever you say is fine with me, sir.
Alright, so Mr. Merricks has made a positive motion with 20 conditions. What we'll do, if we have a second, then I'll read the positive motion and also read the 20 conditions.
I have a second.
Okay. We'll have a motion from Mr. Merricks, a second from Mr. Brumfield. Let me read the positive motion, and then we will... Let me read the positive motion, and then we will vote. Okay, let me get back to my beginning here. All right. Whereas Firefly Solar LLC has petitioned the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special use permit for a utility-scale solar energy facility. And whereas we find no substantial detriment to adjacent property that the character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby, and that such use will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance, and whereas there are no significant adverse effects upon adjacent property that cannot be mitigated through conditions, I move the special use permit be granted with the following conditions. Site development plan, location. All solar panels and other above-ground equipment will be located within the project area shown on the conceptual site plan included with a special use permit application. All site plan requirements of Section thirty-five dash four must be met before the permit is issued.
One forty-one, excuse me.
I'm sorry. I thought they were, excuse me. Section thirty-five dash one forty-one must be met before permits are issued. Height, except for the collection yard and substation or otherwise as required by applicable building code.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is the height requirement that they requested that amendment on?
Okay.
So, you would need to read the redline version if you wish to approve that amendment.
Okay, excuse me. I apologize. I see now, number two. Height, except for the collection and, except for the collection yard and substation, utility poles and associated above-ground wiring or otherwise as required by applicable building code, the maximum height of the solar panels and other above-ground equipment will be fifteen feet. Did I do that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Setbacks, except for fencing and any pole-mounted electronic lines consistent with the county ordinance, all above-ground equipment shall meet the setback requirements set forth in Section thirty-five dash one forty-one D. No setbacks are required between the parcel lines of parcels that are part of a single Fencing for the project will be standard chain length and at least six feet high. The applicant shall maintain the fence for the life of the project. Landscaping. Applicant will comply with Section thirty-five dash one twenty-one fencing screening. At the perimeter locations, the setback will include a minimum one-hundred-foot wide landscaped area comprised of any existing vegetation supplemented as needed with a staggered row of planted trees and large shrubs. All rows of planted vegetation shall be evergreen plantings of varieties native or adaptable to the region, with one row consisting of a variety expected to reach a minimum height of twenty-five feet, and the remaining rows of varieties designed to reach at least fifteen feet in height at maturity. All evergreens shall be a minimum of six feet in height at time of planting. Existing vegetation cells shall be maintained and supplemented with new plantings as needed to maintain required screening. Prior to construction and site plan approval, a landscaping maintenance plan will be submitted to the zoning administrator for approval, excuse me, which shall provide for the posting of a bond or other surety in an amount sufficient to ensure that the plantings are successfully established and the landscaping is maintained or replaced during the life of the project. Landscape renderings or simulations shall be sealed by a registered landscape architect. Construction maintenance and mitigation. Prior to construction, the applicant shall prepare and submit to the zoning administrator a construction management plan to address traffic control methods, site access, fencing, lighting, mitigation of construction operation, and hours of construction activity. View shared protection. A view shared protection plan shall be submitted to and approved by the Director of Community Development prior to the issuance of permits, identifying appropriate measures that will be taken to protect the view shares surrounding the project during construction. Road repairs. All public and private roads must remain open during construction. Any damage to roads caused by construction will be promptly repaired to pre-construction conditions and/or BDOT standards where deemed necessary. Erosion and sediment control. Prior to construction, an approved erosion and sediment control plan will be implemented for the entire project, and an erosion and sediment control bond will be provided. Stormwater management. Prior to construction, a Virginia stormwater management program permit from the Virginia DEQ will be obtained for the project, including an approved stormwater pollution prevention plan. Operational noise and electrical interference. The project will comply with all applicable counterrequirements for noise and shall not generate or create electrical interruptions or interference with existing electrical or electronic uses. Operational light. Fixed lighting at the perimeter of the project will be limited to gates and will be shielded downward-facing to minimize light spillage and shall be motion-activated. Compliance. The project shall be designed, constructed, and tested to meet all applicable local, state, and federal standards. Decommissioning. In accordance with Section thirty-five dash one forty-one E, the applicant shall completely decommission the facility within twelve months if the facility ceases to generate electricity for a continuous period of twelve months, including all solar collectors, cabling, electrical components, fencing, and any other associated equipment, facilities, and structures. Prior to construction and approval of the entire site plan, a decommissioning plan will be submitted to the zoning administrator, which shall provide for the posting of a bond or other surety acceptable to the county in the amount of decommissioning cost, not including salvage value for the project. Start of construction. The special use permit will expire unless construction of the entire project is commenced within three years of the date of the issuance of the special use permit. Survival. So long as the project is operated in conformance with these conditions, the special use permit shall continue for the life of the project. Comply with all DEQ regulations regarding non-point source pollutants. Chemical sprays used in weed control shall comply with DEQ regulations. Fire and rescue training. The applicant shall provide annual training to the local fire department regarding battery storage. Is that right?
You should say solar photovoltaic panels.
Say that again.
In the staff summary, it says...
Let me, okay, I'll read that. All right, take that back. Number eighteen, fire and rescue training. The applicant shall provide annual training to the local fire department regarding solo, solo photo, photovoltaic panels. Ordinance compliance. The project shall remain in compliance with all other applicable requirements of the Pennsylvania County Code thirty-five dash one forty-one D, thirty-five dash one forty-one E, and thirty-five dash one forty-one F, not specifically stated in the conditions of the special use permit. Now, question for the applicant. Mr. Walker, are you all willing to accept those conditions?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. And we've read the eighteen and nineteen conditions, so I guess we're ready to vote. All right, your motion is carried. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.